2022, first item of order. Are there any comments from the public on non-public hearing agenda items? Otherwise, we'll go on to our next agenda, which is the approval of our July 11th minutes. Do I have a motion for approval?
So move.
Mr. Haves makes approval.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Erdman. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes carry. Okay. Section D1 is a public hearing, requesting the City of Granbury to amend select sections of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance pertaining to short-term rentals with a bed and breakfast hosted. Amendments are proposed to section 4.1, use of buildings, and section 4.2, supplement standards for land uses.
Sorry, thank you. As stated, begin with a little bit of a history of the project and how we got to today's item. We have an existing 2001 zoning ordinance, which does include bed and breakfast use. And over time, beginning in 2004, about then, the bed and breakfast platforms online became very popular and have been increasingly so in various communities throughout the country. Staff was directed in early '22 to do some research and come back with a proposed ordinance amendment, which was approved by City Council in July of this year. Per recommendation of the Planning Commission, they also directed and requested a density consideration for the use. Staff has identified a table, a used table cleanup item, that is also accompanying this project, and we'll go over that very quickly on this next slide. The cleanup item is for bed and breakfast hosted. As shown in the used table, it was errantly indicated as P under the B.C., L.C., H.C., and industrial districts. Those are districts in which a single-family residence or dwelling unit is not allowed, and that just needs to be replaced by an X, which means not allowed. So, the bed and breakfast, a short-term rental use, was approved in the historic preservation and historic compatibility districts. Those are overlay districts shown in the light purple and pink color on this map, just as to help you orient to the geographic reference for this overall project. Want to introduce, or at least remind, of a couple of ideas that this project deals with. One is the intensity term. As used in a zoning ordinance, intensity means the amount, the degree, the heaviness of a use on any individual site. So there are controls on an individual site. Density is a measure of the number of units in an area. It could be a site, but in this case, it's a larger geographic area that we're dealing with. So on intensity, just to expand on that a little bit further, for bed and breakfast, it's the amount of use on an individual site. In the bed and breakfast use, short-term rental use, it's the occupancy, how many people can be there as a user of the bed and breakfast, short-term rental. The number of bedrooms, the amount of parking. And outside of the zoning ordinance lives, the noise controls, and disorderly conduct. Those are in the city code. And density, the number of units in a specific area, relates to the number of bed and breakfast or short-term rental sites in a specific geographic area. The comprehensive plan, as a reminder, does address bed and breakfast. It makes recommendations for policy decisions, which tie to the zoning ordinance, which implements the comprehensive plan, as does the city code. So with that first July 22nd, or 2022 zoning ordinance amendment, we have intensity in place, and this proposal again is for density. We did a little bit of research and analysis. The density is allowed to control the number of these uses in an area. The idea is to reduce the impact on nearby properties, being local or a larger region. The focus was on a residential neighborhood. As we went through this process and in hearings in the last year or so, we've heard a significant number of statements from the neighbors to these uses. But a little bit of planning background, planning has variations on what a residential neighborhood might be. Traditional planning speaks to a walkability factor, usually based on a school in the center of a quarter-mile or a 10-minute walkable distance, and at the periphery of that would be your shopping. So that's a very traditional context. A unified idea for a neighborhood would be something that addresses a landmark, not in the sense of a historic district, but as examples here, Beacon Hill in San Francisco, you think of the Beacon Hill neighborhood, and that's a very recognized district. Or in Washington, D.C., there's the DuPont Circle area, which is also a recognized neighborhood. But there are smaller-scale neighborhoods that are perhaps less given less thought in terms of that's your neighborhood. In this context, it's an area where people live near two other neighborhoods, near each other, and with certain expectations that the neighbor nearby to you looks in on you, you look in on them, you form those social relationships. So that's the concern we're dealing with, with this density context. When we look at zoning ordinances, particular to Texas, we find that some zoning ordinances do offer separations of the use by certain distance. These are two examples that we found. Austin was a 1,000-foot distance, and Waco was a 500-foot distance. These are distances that the Plan Commission and City Council may elect to select on their own. So we have a study that focuses on a lesser distance in recognition of the unique nature of our community. It is, again, intended to minimize impacts in a radial direction, so a buffer, like sometimes you see in our notification letters that we send out, those addresses are from a buffer from a subject site. Not going to expand on this too much. What I wanted to point out with this slide is that we're not recommending a buffer from the short-term rental commercial use, which are permitted by right in commercial districts. Again, this is limited to the overlay districts, the historic overlay districts. And here, just showing where the commercial uses are allowed in that commercial, that's the bottom row there, they're all permitted. And in commercial districts, there comes to be an expectation that where commercial districts reside, there could be other higher-intensity uses that have impacts of their own, not unusual to have noise and other kinds of impacts associated with those. So our proposal is a recommendation for 300-foot radial distance. We analyzed 150 feet, 200 feet, as well as 300 feet. And as you can see, as this number changes, the number of use per block, in the block, thinking of the neighborhood block, if you will, although measuring in a radial pattern, not along the face of the block, but a distance from the property line. And then these next slides show maps. The blues and the greens show site locations with that radial measure, and the pinks show opportunity for additional bed and breakfast or short-term rental locations. You'll see in some of the historic areas, there remains some aerial without blue or green or pink showing up. Those are areas where short-term rentals, bed and breakfast, would not be allowed in any case. Now, I'll show you the slide with the 225-foot radial. It kind of splits the difference between 150 and 300 feet, and then the 300. And I can go back through those if you would like me to. In fact, I will, just to give you a flair for the difference, and kind of start to see that change. How with 300, there are fewer opportunities. Now, one thing about this proposal, since we're on the maps, you can kind of see where the existing short-term rentals with the SUPs and so on are located. They would be considered nonconforming until they need to come in and renew their SUP, renew a permit, that kind of activity. So it could be a bit of a conundrum, or a question in the mind of the operator-owner as to when they should come in and obtain that renewal. It's entirely up to them, as it's entirely up to Plan Commission and City Council on what to do with this ordinance amendment. Okay. Now, this slide shows the language that's set out in your proposed code. It's very technical. It's intended to define how that measurement of the distance is arranged, and from which property to how far. I'm not going to go through that, but that's what it does. It tells the reader how to make that measurement. Staff is recommending approval with a 300-foot radial buffer. And these are your options for recommendations as presented, approval as presented. Recommend approval with any revisions you may decide, recommend denial, or continue the item if you need more information. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kara. Do we have any comments from the commission?
Okay, I'll go ahead and open up for the public comments. We have some speakers tonight. The first one's Mr. Wayne Mills. If you'll step to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Mills. I live at 629 East Bridge Street. First off, let me thank you very much for all the effort that's gone into this and for presenting it this evening. Having an opportunity to take a look at some of the comparable city research that's gone on, it appears as though that 300-foot boundary area that's being proposed for approval tonight is one of the least restrictive when it comes to density, and I understand the opportunities there are for what's already out there. And I appreciate that effort that's gone into it and think that that 300-foot is probably a good measure. In addition, one of the other things that was brought up at one of the previous meetings was the opportunity for residents to be able to have a method to contact and talk to the owners, and express concerns that they may have. I had one of those instances the other weekend with some guests that were staying at a bed and breakfast, where they were trespassing on my property. I handled that with the guests that were staying at that property, but then my only option was to get a hold of the city and talk to code compliance about that issue. So, and it was something that I really could have handled with the property owner if I would have had an option to do that. So, just one of those things that if the commission could consider that as well, I'd appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Lou James.
Good afternoon. I'm Lou James of 407 Council Alley. I'd like to speak in favor of the ordinance. Again, I appreciate the city doing such a good job putting this together. It's not my ideal. Short-term rental, to me, is a hotel with a different name, which is a business. It's regulated as a business, taxed as a business, and I don't think a business belongs in a residential neighborhood. But that aside, I would rather have 1,000 feet like Austin, or 500 feet like Waco, but 300 feet is certainly an acceptable compromise. I can live with that. I think that that's fair. If it does pass, my house will be excluded as a B&amp;B, but the house next to me could get a B&amp;B. I'm fine with that. If it does get a B&amp;B or a short-term rental, then at least it will be the only one in the block, and the rest will be neighbors. So, I'm in favor of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Pamela Brewster.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Brewster, Lou's wife. Live at 407 Council Alley, Old Mill Crossing. First of all, thank you, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was your directive that went up to City Council that listened to us, the neighborhoods, the single-family residential neighborhood people, who said, "Oh, my gosh, our way of life is disappearing. It is turning into a hotel zone." So I want to thank you for sending that to City Council. I want to thank Ms. Huawei and her staff, all your research. We went through it, probably not as diligently as you did, but we certainly appreciate that. I can tell a lot of time has been spent on that. Those of us who live in the historic district and the overlay district would love a 500-foot buffer. We'd love a 1,000-foot buffer. When you think about one or less per block, that's livable. That really is livable, like my husband said. No, it's not ideal. We'd like to, you looked at the map, oh, my gosh, there's so many. And there's still a lot of opportunities left in the 300-foot buffer zone. So I would like to say, even though it's probably not, I'd rather a 500, we would like it because it would allow some breathing room, and it would make us feel that you do care about us, as single-family residences and people who inhabit your great small town, most historic small town in America, because we are important to the city, but we also understand that you need tourist dollars. So I would like to put my vote on the 300, because I think it's a good compromise. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker, Mr. Peter Garland.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Peter Garland. I live at 511 East Bridge Street. I also have bed and breakfast near my house. I got nine of them from the 400 block of Bridge Street down to where it makes the turn down at the end. So we have quite a few bed and breakfasts. Fortunately, the three that are directly across from my house are very well-managed. We haven't, they've been there like a year and a half, two years, and we haven't had any problem. That doesn't mean it's always going to be that way. So I think the density is very important. I've always thought that from the beginning. And I do think the 300-foot is a little short. I think 500 would be absolutely perfect, and I do, if that can't be done, then I would go for the 300. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. James Ambrose.
Good evening. My name is James Ambrose. I live at 404 Mary Lou Court, Granbury. I, again, like the rest, appreciate that you took the time to canvass some of the other cities in Texas to see what they were doing. Unlike some of them, I actually don't like the 300. I'd rather it be 500. I'm very strict about that, because I grew up in Waco, my sister still lives there, and I know that Waco depends on tourist trade a lot, just like Granbury does. And they've set a 500-foot distance. I think that's a much more reasonable number than the three. I won't be real happy if it passes with three, but I would much rather see five, but I'll live with it if I have to. That's all I really had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our last speaker tonight is Denise Moore.
I'm Denise Moore. I live at 500 Council Alley, and I really just wanted to say thank you for listening to us. It's nice to be validated that our voices have been heard, because we feel like it's been a battle. And I agree with everybody else. I wish it was bigger, a bigger distance, but if 300 is what we can get, then we appreciate it, and thank you for considering this for us. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other public comments, I'll close the session for public comments.
Chair, I have a question for staff.
Yes.
Kara, looking at the 300-foot blue circles, or even the 150-foot blue circles, there's tremendous overlap. So adopting this ordinance when they come up for renewal, obviously, a lot of the existing bed and breakfasts would no longer be able to function as a bed and breakfast, a short-term Well, that seems to be an infringement on people's property rights to no longer be able to use their property for their best purposes they have determined, which is to rent them out. What have we thought about the impact on the city's hotel occupancy tax? Because we'll be reducing the number of short-term rentals considerably if this is passed.
So I'm hearing two questions, one being the duration of an SUP. An SUP, as discussed in the previous council meetings and other meetings, an SUP approved with a time limit needs to come back for review and consideration. Where a new regulation has been put in place, then the SUP must conform to the new regulations. The time clock starts again. If an SUP has been allowed to lapse, then a new SUP would need to be considered. It should address, there were those 14 sites that did not have a time consideration. Those become nonconforming. If they fall out of nonconformity, they would need an SUP. So that addresses the first question. Regarding the hotel tax that come from the bed and breakfast, of course, the fewer sites there are, the less tax revenues that would be generated. I think that's all I can really say about how that would work. More, you get more taxes, less, you get less taxes.
Any other comments from the commission?
Yeah, I have a question, kind of to follow up on that, as far as with the overlaps. And I know we've got, like you said, we've got some that were done with the one-year limitation. When they come back, if they're in, if they're already overlapped with others that are existing, do they not get to, are they just going to be out of it? Or, I mean, is it going to be first-come, first-served kind of thing, as far as getting it in before your others do to overlap?
Exactly. It would be a first-come, first-served. Mm-hmm.
So if I understand this correctly, when this, when they all come up for renewal, there are going to be some that will no longer be able to be renewed, because they're going to be within 300 feet of each other?
Right. There may be some that come in prior to them, that get approved, and that sets the distance. There could be some that perhaps have expired and don't come in, thinking that they don't need to. There's a wide variety of scenarios that we could cover.
And they will all come in at different times, based upon when they were initiated?
Right. And it's entirely up to the property owner to take that initiative and to come in and re-up their SUP.
Okay. Thank you.
So in theory...
Excuse me? Go ahead.
So in theory, we could have fewer bed and breakfasts in the near future if they should fail to renew or be granted a extension or a renewal of their SUP?
Correct.
So they'll actually all have to come before the Planning and Zoning Commission to obtain that SUP?
Correct, with those exceptions of the 14.
Okay, so if there is a group of five or six altogether, as you can see on the map there are now, we could, in effect, have one or two, and then that area would shrink and open up new opportunities within that area for a new bed and breakfast.
That's a possibility as well.
So if you were a major businessperson, and you had multiple bed and breakfasts, or you were a management company and had multiple bed and breakfasts, you could lose a significant number of those.
That could be the case. I haven't accounted any trend in which businesses are the same, that perhaps own a good number, you know, to determine that, but it's a scenario that is possible.
I have a question. So if, in his instance, we have five that overlap, and they come up at different times, so the first-come, first-served gets the cookie and the rest are out? If we, and I'm just throwing this out there, if we thought about, is grandfathering these that are in and starting this from, I'm now confused, because you're going to have people lined up the door fighting for their property rights?
Right.
And I wouldn't want to be in your shoes.
I appreciate that. So grandfathering works in a different way. Grandfathering occurs when a regulation changes and someone has a right that does not have a term limit. So that's why the 14 without the term limit become grandfathered. Those that have a term limit do not become grandfathered. They have an expiration date.
Any other comments from the commission?
How many do we have that have term limits, and how many do we have that don't?
I believe there could be slightly more than 68 that have term limits, and about 14 that do not, that don't have a term.
So the issue will be with the 68 competing against one another, for lack of a better term?
Correct.
So we are saying that the density is going to be reduced?
The number of sites will be...
Right. Which is by definition of density.
By definition of density would be reduced.
So they will have fewer bed and breakfasts in their neighborhood?
Depending upon how many of those are, do not term out, but...
Term out and don't overlap, right.
Conceivably, there would be fewer.
Well, the percentage is six, you said 60, how many?
68.
68. So it's going to be a, it's going to be a chunk.
Right. So all that blue halo area with the green, the green represents particular sites.
So it could shrink.
It could shrink. Other, when it shrinks, then there could be opportunity for other locations. Right.
You have to dumb this down for me one more time, and I apologize. I just want to make sure that I understand this. So John and I are neighbors. I'm just hypothetical. We both have a bed and breakfast. If John gets down to City Hall before I do to renew, I'm out.
That's a possibility.
Okay. Thank you. And if I live across the street, outside the 300 feet, I can go down and sign up and beat you out, basically.
May I ask a question? Can they not renew before it expires?
I think, Mr. Chairman, could you recognize the speaker and have them come to the microphone for the record?
Go ahead and come back up to the podium.
Pamela Brewster, 407 Council Alley. We, when looking at all the maps, more or less assumed, I think this is true, that those would still be here. So I thought if they didn't let it expire, you know, with the SUP, they didn't have to go and refile to get a new one. Is that correct?
So where there's an SUP with a term limit, with a time requirement, they have to come in to renew.
Okay. But they don't, like, lose it and have to reapply? They just have to pay, just...
Oh, no. They have to go through a public hearing process, through Plan Commission and City Council.
Every single renewal?
Yes. Where there's a time limit that expires, they have to come in, unless, of course, they don't want to continue the use.
Right, right.
Then it just goes away.
But if they do, then they still may or may not, and it was always that way, may not have been approved, is what you're saying?
Right.
Because of the approval process. So we're really not changing anything there. Okay. We didn't understand that. Okay, just like you all, we weren't sure of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kara. We'll close the public session again. I've got a request to go into executive session. So we're going to take, we're going to take 15 minutes. So we're going to take, we're going to take 15 minutes.